Just after six o'clock, then call the regular select board meeting to order. It's August first. And it's not raining, so that's good. First thing is to set, adjust agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight? Anyone? Alright, we're gonna roll what we have. Next communication from the audience. Audience is a little thin on the ground tonight. Uh, next, uh, select board to approve minutes from last time, which was July 18th.
I can motion to approve the regular select board meeting minutes of July 18th.
Uh, we have second?
I'll second.
Alright, I thought they looked good. Any discussion? Call in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, and opposed? Motion carries. Next is town manager report given by David Upson.
Um, so, a lot of the stuff that I've been working on is further down in the meeting agenda. Basically, the last couple of weeks, I've been communicating and coordinating with the road foreman. Getting roads open back up, getting, finding out what we need for a lot of the bridges. Talking with the state bridge inspectors. Getting a quick RFP out for, or request for bids out for Riverside Farm. Trying to figure out a plan of attack for Fisher-Polly, which I can, I'll defer to the road foreman on that. So, just flood, flood recovery stuff. Uh, working with our zoning administrator and flood plan manager. Or flood plan administrator to work on the, this document that you'll be presenting tonight. So, a lot of planning, a lot of looking ahead to the future and trying to figure out the best plan of attack. And prioritizing our moves.
Great.
Yep.
Where is Riverside Bridge?
Where is it?
It's right.
It's in the river.
Was it located right near there or?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's right on the edge.
Right by, right, like dropped right there?
No, it's, it's downriver on the sixteen side. But the, uh, the girders, the steel is all bent.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, I just, I looked and I haven't seen it in the river.
Yeah. Yeah, and, uh, and also coordinating with Gary Nolan. Uh, we had the, we submitted our application to be able to blast in the gravel pit. Direct for the executive order.
Great.
Um, we've talked, uh, I've seen the preliminary, um, plans for the Actu 50 amendment. So, we have, uh, a blasting company, which we'll talk about, I think, a little bit later. Under new business, um, coming in in two weeks, hopefully, to, so we can get some large stone and start using them for rebuilding our roads and, and bridge abutments and bank armor and all stuff we're gonna need. And, uh, the material is dwindling fast. Saint J and Linden have a lot of damage. And it's not a, there's, there's not a infinite supply of it.
We can only make it so fast.
Yeah.
And, and everyone was out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna throw out there that I dropped into the town manager's office a few times in the last couple of weeks, three weeks. And, um, it's astounding to me how much emphasis, how much focus is on flood-related stuff now. And I was just reflecting back, you know, like, three years ago, we had, you know, we had projects. And like five years ago and 10 years ago, we had projects, but we had mostly like the running of the town, like the normal operations, how can we approve? And now, it's just seems like so much focus is on the flood response. And even places where we know we have funding, just organize, doing the project management. You know, you have to put out a request for proposal to get bids, and then you have to review the bids, anyway.
Yeah.
Just wanna acknowledge that the town staff is, is doing an awful lot these days. Alright, thank you. Moving on, uh, road foreman report. Uh, another department is doing an awful lot these days.
Oh, let's see, last time we talked, let's see, uh, we got the underpass back open, our part anyways.
Oh, up in the bend?
Up in the bend, yeah, 'cause our bend got pretty well washed out and it was locked up and everything else they got. So, we had to dig all that out, and then we had to rebuild and retaining wall. So, we got that back and got that part open. After we went from there, uh, while we were up there, we ended up, you know, armering up, uh, one of the electric poles up, up there for the light department that was down, downstream from the river. So, we got that done for them. Then after that, we came up from there, I think we headed straight to Cape Brook Road afterwards. Uh, we spent two and a half days up there, so, you know, O P said to get some armor in the banks up there. We probably had eight, nine different walkouts in the roadway out there that we had to deal with. Uh, we still got one left by Helen Gates's. Uh, we had a retaining wall that kinda collapsed down the end, so we still have that left to do up there. Uh, this, this week, uh, well before the rain, I thought we were gonna get the other day. Uh, we installed two bigger sized culverts up on Cape Brook Road and ripped out the two smaller ones. Then after we got done out there, we went to Cape Brook Road, spent a few days up there. We got that road now back open, still got the road closed signs up, but you can go through, but it's, it's, it's rough. But that is passable up through there now. Uh, the other thing we did with the granite culvert where it seems all was washed down the road, they got the hill, uh, we added to eight, another thirty-two inch culvert next to that box culvert for overflow. And then we have another one just down the road a little bit, another eighteen inch to cross the road, so hopefully, that will help us out there. Same thing, uh, we armored some places down through there that needed it. Still got one more spot left on there. We ended up cleaning the gravel up, that was at the bottom, that got washed out. We trucked that over to Smith Farm Road and rebuilt that, got that back. Uh, today, uh, the grader was out toward McMillway, trying to pick spots out through there and trying to get road, uh, graded back, 'cause I know we're way behind on everything anyways. Uh, then the rest of us, we've been up on Harbick Farms, dismantling that bridge. Uh, so we've got that all done today, and all, all ready to go. Uh, 'cause that needs to go back to V Trans, either Montfair, or it might be heading right over to Lindaville from that location, we're not sure yet.
Did that, did that bridge come out more than, less than one piece?
Uh, they took it out one piece.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, they sat it up off the blocks for us, so we could take, take, take a fire all the way down through. We've got that done. Talked to Travis today, uh, so I will have two of the eight foot, forty, forty foot length culvert for Harbick Farms tomorrow morning. And then, then the other two sections, they're supposed to come in maybe tomorrow afternoon, drop the fingers, and then they'll either unload maybe, either late tomorrow night or early Saturday morning. So, they should have all the sections of culverts there. The gravel's playing, uh, working there first thing Monday morning, starting that project there. Fisher-Polly's, we can open the top through the, or open top to the, uh, owners up on Fisher-Polly's road there. They tried to come up with a plan for that bridge. So, the plan is that, whether the board wants us to do it, or if you guys want to do out a bid, one way or the other. The idea, uh, talked to Jeremy from the state of Vermont, was to lift the bridge up out of place, re-armour the banks, build the retaining walls back out, and then pick the bridge back up and set it back in place. So, if we did it, we could use a bigger excavator instead of do this project with, just because of the size of the stone and the reach to get over on the other side of the brook. Uh, so, we want some idea of what you guys' thought is on this, which way you want us to proceed with that one, so we can get that done, get, get, get that going. Yeah.
I guess we have a lot of other things to work on.
And that's it. And then, the only road that we don't have open is Cherry Road. And, you know, is, is he still coming tonight, or?
No.
Uh, no? Uh, 'cause I know we have residents that, that doesn't want us to open that road. They think it's a waste of money rebuilding it and putting it back. But the problem is, if we don't, we need to cover up that water line somehow, some way that's in the brook. If not, then they're gonna freeze out this morning.
Well, I think we should certainly put that one, you know, we're not gonna rebuild that as a priority, I would think.
That's our last road to get back up, like that and start over again.
I think we got, we got more enough to do this summer. I think that thing oughta, we oughta worry about the water line and leave the bridge for another day. And just leave the road closed, we can do that, right?
We can, but like I said, Danny, that water line has to be covered.
Yeah, that's what I said, we can deal with the water line.
Independent, can we deal with the water line independent of, like, on its own?
You can, but you're gonna have to dig it up, you're gonna have to get permits to go through that brook, drop it down into the brook. 'Cause right now, it's right on top, it just, it just crosses. So, the water level's so low right now, the pipe is exposed. So, if we only leave that road closed as is, you're gonna have to do something with that water.
So, I put it on, what are we gonna do, do it on?
We, we just need to fill that back in, Danny, and go, and put some stone back, just, just like we did before.
I, I don't know.
I mean, we don't need anything else, or are we gonna suit the amount of foot of stone we're bumping it back up with? I would just do it.
So, the box culvert is still okay?
The box culvert's still, yes, okay. If it did, it did just like it did before, it just washed down around and took the gravel out.
Yeah, we can, I mean, I think that, I think that the conver, I think that our working document is gonna be helpful for priorities and where we wanna go. But I think we can have this conversation, for sure. We've got our first round of, of requests for bids and the Harbick Farms RFP and for engineering out. I think we need to figure out and prioritize what our next steps are for, 'cause the, the engineering services are not like, we're getting responses now, but we have, we have three projects that require engineering. We have, um, some big, um, hazard mitigation projects that we're gonna need engineering for. So, we can definitely put it out. I, I wouldn't say we do a quick fix and then get an R, an RFP out for engineering. And get a structure in there, and don't put any more line into that. Get it to where we can drive on it, where it's open, where we need the water line covered, and then get a, get an RFP out for a new structure there.
A new bridge structure, earned in part.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't need to be a, a high priority?
No, no, our next, our priority right now is Fisher-Polly's.
Yeah, 'cause we have, we still have a family that can't, have a rental car parked on the other side of the bridge.
Right, as well as Riverside?
Well, Riverside, I was taking care of that, that's in there later, Danny. So, that's all.
For the temporary bridge?
Uh, we have a, we have direct, a direction from the state. I put it out to, uh, request for bids with the scope that the state wants us to do. And we just have to approve one of the, the bids. And that'll be a temporary permanent bridge.
A temporary bridge that stays a long time.
The abutments are good?
Abutments are good, yep. Well, those, those have been inspected, and they're good.
Yeah, they're good, yeah.
Yeah. There's a, one of the, one of the sides needs some work on the bridge seat, the bridge deck seat or whatever. And then...
Yeah, I would say we just Band-Aid up the Cherry Road.
Others, others have thoughts?
I mean, I guess my, the concern that I heard was, like, how many times do we Band-Aid it? And how much does that cost? And that, and this came up last year as well, we had to cover up the pipe because it was exposed. So, I think it's not gonna cost us very much to just fill the road, right?
No, we need probably a few little stay pack, just to pack around that box culvert, make sure the water's not flowing through it.
Yep.
And then we start hauling from our own pit with our own gravel up there, whether it's all the cobblestones up there, just fill it in. And then armor the banks with a couple loads and loads of, uh, big rock and stuff.
So, the way I figure, if it doesn't cost us that much to just do that fix to cover the pipe, I mean, before we know it, it's gonna be October, it's just the reality of it. Then we can still have the conversation about if we need to take it out altogether, we can. Or if we need to do a bigger bridge, we can, it's not saying one or the other, it's just basically fixing the, protecting the pipe.
Right, that's been on the hydraulic study since last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether we got anything back on it or not yet, and it just, we're just gonna...
Okay, so Cherry Road Band-Aid?
Yeah.
And then the other thing you were looking for guidance on is whether, on Fisher-Polly?
Fisher-Polly.
And so, just my first reaction as you were talking is it sounds like you guys have, you've been doing a lot of work, you still have a lot of work in front of you, and you don't, we don't actually own the equipment to make, I don't know, it sounds to me, the way you presented it, it makes more sense to hire it out.
Right.
No, what, are you concerned about timing?
I'm concerned about the amount of money we've been spending, and we're about to spend in our cash flow and the, the timeliness of FEMA reimbursement.
Untimeliness, you mean?
Yeah, the untimeliness of FEMA reimbursements. These'll obviously be all new projects, um, going through the FEMA process, but if...
So, like, the clock starts ticking now-ish, or when we?
Well, there hasn't been a declaration yet. I hear it's coming.
Still waiting for that.
So...
No, but I mean, as opposed to, like, we're still waiting for money for things we did last year?
Correct, yeah, we have...
And this is stuff that's starting now?
Right.
So, we can rest assured that we'll be waiting, at least a year.
So, we have several projects in, in, in the queue to be approved by, um, historical preservation, environmental and historical preservation. They're, they're short stat, so they haven't been able to approve them. We have a couple of RFI's outstanding request for information that we're providing to them. Uh, and then, we've, so we have two big road projects. Approximately hundred and fifty, no, no, four hundred and fifty thousand? The three, the two road projects that we have from last storm? So, that should be coming in, um, in the next month or so. We have a rented excavator in the pit that we could use for the Fisher-Polly project. How many days do you think that will work? If we can get the crane, and we're hoping to get a crane, uh, from Mayo's or a crane service to lift the bridge out of the way and set it, um, to the side so we can do the work. But that's, that's a few days. If we have to put that out to bid, we're looking at, you know, another fifteen to thirty day window for quotes. Wait to see what we get for quotes.
Yeah.
Or we do it in time?
We do it in-house.
In time, yeah.
So, your inclination is that, well, so both of you, are, are you both saying that do it in-house?
I'm good either way.
You're good either way, and you're saying preserve our capital because we're spending a lot of it, and when the road crew has time, they can do Fisher-Polly.
Well, they'll do it and get it done.
Right.
I mean, last year, we put it out to bid, right, we hired to do it.
We did, yep.
And do you remember how much that cost us? It was a lot.
Fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that was to put, um, that was to tear out the old bridge minus the abutments and install the temporary bridge. So, we would just be putting together the, re, reshoring the waste blocks. A lot of the stuff we have already, so we can reuse. And, uh, so the cost is the crane and, uh...
Material.
And some material and the rental, but we're gonna use the same bridge.
We used to be able to help Fisher-Polly's up in the field and get down to sixteen.
I walked it. It can be done, but we have to get permission from landowners and the farmer that's renting the field, yeah. The, we, we thought about that just to get the truck out, but that's not gonna be a winter thing. And the family there has, they heat with heating oil, so...
No, they, they need a bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are sick of this.
Yeah. I mean, they've been, they, they're aware of the, of the timeframe, they're aware that it might be a little bit. But I think we could probably do it for about half as much if we do it ourselves.
And then we, and then we have less money hanging out there, waiting for reimbursement.
Right.
Well, push aside, do it, hold on, we're about to do it. Your call will be.
My call?
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna do it.
And everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. And if something changes, just let us know.
Right.
Be careful.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for all your work and your crew.
Yep.
Yeah. Next is the Harbick Police Department report, Mike Henry?
Make it fast. Good news is, I've got somebody I've been working on, local person that's in the process right now, and coming along as a part-time officer. So, hopefully, we, uh, we'll have everything set for him to work in Academy, part-time in September. But he's going through background, through program, through much better stuff, medical, all that stuff, so. Just a long process. The big, uh, big thing I'm trying to work on right now is the radio system. Uh, I think I brought it up already that, uh, uh, we lost our, uh, grant. And we're trying to look around, uh, trying to figure out whether we can get another grant or something else, but our radio's just don't work. So, we've gotta figure out a way to get that. And the only way it will work is with this silencast system. I've talked to several people, I got bids on used equipment, I just need to make money without me. But then I talk to other people who are like, you know, they'll spend the money, get something that's gonna last longer than, than short-term effects. So, they're back there doing it, and that's it.
Alright.
That's it.
Much work. Thank you. Questions for Mike?
Is Marcus LeBarge, the guy?
No, Marcus has gone through the part-time academy, we're still working on him. Um, I guess I'm doing him out there, he's still down. So, alright, I know everybody, so, hard to rescue, fire department.
Oh, okay.
So, there's somebody local that I have here. You might know him.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Great.
He's in the process, Danny.
Alright, thanks. So, next is item one, select board to consider appointing Marcus LeBarge as a Harbick police officer.
Just consider it.
Yeah.
Make motion to appoint him.
Alright.
Can I just ask a really good question? Or can, I can do it during discussion, I guess.
Do we have a second?
I can sec, second that?
Alright. Great.
Um, my question, just Mike is, um, and maybe I missed it, but is Marcus, he's the part, he's part-time as well?
He's part-time as well.
But he's gone through the acad, the...
He's gone through the academy, he's in the field training portion, and there's, uh, about a hundred hours of other training that has to go after, so he's done the two-week training, now there's like another hundred hours he's gotta get done. Then he's gotta get, uh, field training, it can be a hundred to two hundred hours of field training before he's ready to go.
Yeah.
So, he's in that process as well.
So, we have a motion and a second, do we have more discussion? Call in favor of appointing Marcus LeBarge as Harbick police officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Motion carries, thank you for continuing to recruit. Item two, zoning administrator Kristen Leahy is here to present the select board with findings of the AARP report of pedestrian safety on South Main Street.
I'm not gonna go through the whole report, I didn't even bring it with me.
Thank you.
But the planning commission did ask that it be presented to you at this meeting because it has number seven, which is highlighted, is a recommendation for crosswalks for possibly go town. You probably should be weighing in on this as well, unless you're fear. The town manager's office received several calls last fall about how there's no side, there's no crosswalks for the, um, area beyond, uh, upper more Cherry Street. So, when the planning, uh, O P asked me to have the planning commission look at it, planning commission did their AARP review, watched the traffic flows and looked at it and came up with Summer Street, which is, I think, number seven? Yeah, it's the highlighted one. And that is some of the picture reflects where that is. We still would need some kind of identification of a crosswalk, perhaps a flashing sign, another expensive, but in the future. But right now, we don't have any, we don't have any crosswalks for the kids to further up to get over. There's no cross, there's no sidewalk on that side, and then to cross. It's kind of, it's very busy, and, yeah. Tom, you have any thoughts on that?
This is, um, I've received several calls from concerned parents about kids walking to school and they, they can't safely cross, um, and walk, or walk down, um, South Main Street on the southbound side of the road, there's, it's just, there's no sidewalk. And I think in the future, we'll have a sidewalk there, hopefully, but, um, we need to look at the crossing there. This is the best, this is the best location. Anywhere along that hill, anywhere along that hill, um, is, is a blind, kind of a blind area.
Is that the best site?
So, do people stop with that, or?
It's too close to that, that corner.
So, we're just gonna not worry about that?
No, I mean, that's something that we can, this is doing this...
I don't know why this would be a priority, going down on Jenny Road.
Well, because the request has been for at least one to go in there.
This is where they would cross.
How'd they get there?
We gotta work on that.
This is the first step, Danny.
They're wa, they're already walking up the road.
For them to fix one?
Yeah.
I don't understand why they're not dealing with the whole problem. I'm not into dealing with it.
Well, we can't rebuild all the sidewalks that need to be rebuilt or extended.
We would be wanting a new one.
Some paint. We're talking about some paint on the road.
So, is there...
So, you're saying...
Just the request for painting crosswalks or for redoing the sidewalks, or both?
No, at this point, it is just a request to...
This is a recommendation.
Or...
Just a crosswalk is being recommended, so right now, it's just...
At this point, I mean, a sidewalk would definitely be recommended.
Yeah, it's a definitely safety issue.
We use these to leverage information to, to go for certain studies, et cetera. So, that's what you have here.
I'm confused, are you saying that there should be more, or is this a wrong location?
No, I'm saying there should be one there, there needs to be one down on Jenny Road. And Alvin parking on the right-hand side, on South, at least it's not be non-existent.
You mean, parking at the no parking spots?
When I grew up, there was a sidewalk on that side of the road, and nothing's changed except for we allow parking there.
Well, we don't actually allow it.
Yes, we do allow it. We sanction it, we allow it, we let people do it, we do not do anything to stop them.
We don't do anything to stop them?
No, we gave zoning permits to that house with tenants, they, they park there.
I didn't give zoning permits.
They got a heated pack, they, I got a picture on my phone of enough parking sign, they had a gas on.
We know the problem.
So, I'm saying about the four, we're not gonna just put one crosswalk in, the rest of the world?
Well, so, Danny, I, this is one piece of two. The other piece is the existing, I'm working with, um, Sean Gadel. I'm sorry, I was working on it when the flood happened, so that has taken priority. But I am doing an existing conditions for that segment as far as parking goes. And using historical perspectives and working with the fire marshal. So, it's going to be an entire...
Right, so...
Which is what you would ask me for.
So, are we talking about this 600, that parking house?
Yeah, yeah.
There's parking there, parking is allowed in, in staff there, but from there up...
So, there's no sidewalk there?
Right, there's no parking.
But there needs to be.
Well, we always saw it, there, there never any parking on that street, including, just at, uh, Prell's house. And it was, you know, in front of the bend, it was off, you could walk between road and white line.
Right.
So, Danny, if, if they're recommending these four spots, are you saying you should just go ahead and do all four?
I have no problem with more crosswalks.
Or do all three, or just like...
I absolutely think there needs to be more crosswalks. But my, I don't know, it's just, I hate to just put one, because I live south of that, my grandkids live south of that.
Right.
My children live south of that, we are south of that. So, and you can't walk...
That corner is really tough.
You can't, well...
There is sidewalk.
I don't know what to tell you. That, we, you know, I...
Ultimately, what do you do with sidewalk?
There is stop.
No, but we don't wanna put us, I, I get it, but we don't wanna put us a crosswalk in where somebody's gonna get hit crossing the road.
So, we'll let them get hit where there's no crosswalk and stuff, right?
No, that's not okay either. That's no, that's not okay either.
Alright, let's move on. My arguments we made.
Okay, but I think...
We get it.
But I think we do, I, I think I hear a consensus that we need at least, uh, we agree that to at least provide a crosswalk at that one location.
Um, are, would, we do that, right? Or do we have to ask the state to, like, we can just say yes, Tom?
Yes, as long as it's an AD, we have to make it ADA compliant.
Okay. So, I mean, is there an argument, also to Danny's point of if you're going out and you're painting one, doesn't it make sense to just, hey, I mean...
How are we gonna make it ADA compliant?
Right.
That's the trick.
With that sidewalk, it's not available to us.
Well, see, you've got a big sidewalk up both ways, you've got the A fire, ramp them up.
That's what I'm saying.
But there's no sidewalk.
It's way more than paint.
There's no sidewalk someone, sorry.
Agreed.
Right, but you're asking for, go from Summer Street, you go across over, over there by the graveyard.
Two foot elevation.
So, from there, if you take that, you, that has to be ADA compliant, which means that you gotta go back a certain distance on each way.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing you gotta remember right there, too, Bryson or Comcast or whoever, all telephone companies, they gotta manhole right there. That's buried. That's buried, that has, that takes control of all, you know, tel- telephones it down. That feeds up and that goes.
So, it's not simple?
No.
It's not just painted?
No, because I, actually, that side, getting up to that sidewalk, A D A is gonna be a pain. I have a whole length of it.
Yep, no, that whole thing needs to be redone. But, and then on the, on the west side, there's no sidewalk there, right?
Correct.
So, you're also not landing on a sidewalk on that side of your crosswalk.
So, it could all be resolved by installing a sidewalk on the right-hand side and they can come down to Cherry House.
You could do a-
The problem is, we don't have a sidewalk on both sides.
Right, it is.
You don't need your cross, as long as, you could walk Jenny Road, I would go down to the cross at Cherry House, that's fine. That, to me, is an excellent solution. Problem is, you can't walk on that side of the street because of all the-
So, we could do a quick temporary fix, which would mean a paint a sidewalk.
Right.
Paint, I'd go, yeah, but the problem is, the people feel hurt.
So, but you start with that?
If it's been that way, there's white line there now, it doesn't make no difference, so. I hear you.
We can, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to work within our budget.
Kristen, you always try to get things done. And, and if you want to do one sidewalk, go ahead and one crosswalk?
Well, it doesn't sound like a bad crosswalk, it makes any sense, though, if they, they can't land it.
Well, they're not gonna be able to get up over the bank very easily. It's dangerous.
Yeah.
And there's no, uh, it's not even wide enough, I don't think.
What's that, sidewalk?
Yeah.
That's only like four feet.
Yeah, so it's major problems there and gonna be-
So, maybe a better-
So, maybe if you paint a sidewalk on the side that they're walking on, they don't need a crosswalk to go across to the sidewalk.
Right.
I like that.
Delineate a place for them to be.
Yeah.
And we can enforce, we can enforce people parting on the sidewalk.
We always, you know, it always used, everybody used that and grew up as a sidewalk.
It's wide enough, it's in the report. It's wide, it's wide, it looks like, it looks perfect for a sidewalk.
Yeah.
I mean, we could do, we could figure something out, Dan, at Tom?
It is easily, wow. It's great, I agree.
Alright, we'll take, we'll take the recommendations.
Yes, thank you.
We will take the select board recommendations and comments and put them in play to try to solve this problem.
That sounds perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Yeah.
Alright. And thanks, Kristen.
Yes, thank you.
Well, thank the, the planning commission, please. They did work on this.
Next is Kristen again to give a flood update and potential river request.
Can I defer to you? Can you do this? Yeah, you, you're over there.
You're due.
We both went through this whole document.
Okay.
Is this what she sent us?
No, well, yeah, it was just a packet. It's updated again.
Oh, I didn't read it.
I haven't seen this.
Okay, this is, this is our working document. It's a seven-page document that prioritizes where we're at.
Four.
And where we're going. Huh?
Four.
Four.
I made it shorter.
Okay. So, the first thing-
We're carrying on the red one?
We have numbers on here. Um, I would like to state that my list of priorities goes this way rather than this way. They're all equally important because everybody in the community stands to benefit from them all, okay? The first one here, we have a hazard mitigation pre-application in for, um, looking at flood storage and flood benching in the motel property and haze service station.
It's also soil stabilization is included in that.
Yeah.
You say we'll lower that soil, that would be kind of a question.
Feel, feel free to-
Now, we're thinking.
Feel free to chime in, too, on this.
Thanks.
And this is, uh, Kristen's done a lot of this work and, um, got a lot of these pre-applications in. I've been talking to river engineers and, um, higher-ups within state government, um, the NRCS, uh, the Natural Resource Conservation District in Caledonian County. Um, so, we're, um, we're going full speed ahead on these, planning for these projects. And we have to remember that we have a very large river that comes in east of town and a very large river that empties west of town. And we have a very small area where the water needs to go through in our downtown. Um, so, we're gonna start at the problem and even further up in East Harvick, we have some temporary, or preliminary grant plans there. So, the second, um, item-
Can I ask, in the first one? It said that the, the temporary bank stabilization's already happened?
Yes, so, um, I had a-
Haven't seen it.
After the flood-
Unhated.
After the flood, I contacted, um, I met at the site with, uh, agent, the secretary of A and R Moore, Julie Moore, and had she partnered with B Trans and they were able to put in a hundred feet of bank stabilization to stop that bank from-
Oh, God, I wish it was about a hundred forty feet then.
Yeah, I know. So-
It's gonna be nervous now, because now it's gonna turn right down.
They had to, they had to take two tanks, uh, they had to drain one tank out with diesel, uh, take a propane tank out, and there's a serious amount of bank that was lost. My fear is that, uh, or my concern is that in the event of high water flooding, if that bank gives way and water goes over the top of it, it's gonna go right down Mel Street.
It's absolutely, yeah, that's fair.
So, this is priority one, or the top priority on our list. The second is, um, we had the presentation last week, uh, from the river program through N B D A and Two Rivers, um, Regional Planning Commission. So, they're hopefully going to look at the hydrology and the river going down to downtown. This picture here is the backside of Mike's, uh, service station in, on our main street.
It's actually the, the right-hand side, right there, back there.
This is-
True, for the peace park, yeah.
This is the riverside, the riverside.
And the peace park.
Yeah. So, with the, um, with the widening of the river, the water is moving differently. And the town has, um, the responsibility in that bank on the inside of the curve of the river. And we need to come up with a plan quickly to armor the inside of that bank with concrete wall. Uh, we can't put, uh, or we shouldn't put more fill in that area because, or armor, bank armory, because we're gonna be making the channel narrower, speeding up the water. Um, so, we wanna give it as much room as possible, so, concrete wall along the inside of the river there. Um, we have Stan Tech working on this, hopefully. Um, we will need some sort of a, uh, informal nod from the select board that we want Stan Tech to keep moving forward with the river program, um, so they can keep doing their work. But this is, uh, the area in our downtown, all the way down the retaining wall that was damaged last flood, um, downstream from this, from the pedestrian bridge. Um, so, we're having those conversations with FEMA.
So, what's happening?
We're about directly opposite this, where the river's still washing?
That's, I mean, that's ledge.
Okay.
But, but that's forty-one brush street, you can add up.
And forty-one brush street is, we're gonna try to, that is in the buyout, uh, application, but it's taking way too long. We're gonna try to have some higher-level conversations with FEMA to see if we can remove that, um, building before it goes into the river. Yeah.
Just to clarify, so, so for this project, we're talking about not just repairing that one section of behind Brochus, but basically from-
North Main Street Bridge.
Where the concrete is?
Yeah.
So, that, so that includes behind the Centennial Building?
Yeah.
All the way around?
Yeah.
Kristen's quartering her seat. Go ahead, go ahead.
So, so it's not just fixing, it's doing a holistic approach, looking at the entire, from like, from haze, just below haze. So, the first, the first section you see is haze and the town's own, the town-owned lot, the old, in by the river. And then looking at what needs to happen to protect the downtown. So, we're gonna give the river more space above, protect in the middle, and then there's another one to give more space below. But it would be going from, um, the co-op all the way down through both sides to the, um, Cottage Street Bridge. Not necessarily doing everything right away, but at least coming up with a plan so that we're not inadvertently arming for, for, um, the Brochus and taking out Len's diner. You know, so, having it planned.
Yeah, once you do something one place, there's an effect somewhere else. So, that's why we're taking a whole picture.
And you can see from that other side of the river, from where this picture's taken, that there's, like, certainly things happening in that whole corridor, so, makes sense.
And most of that was walled-
Yeah.
With granite blocks from way back.
My only concern, which I'm sure is yours, too, is that's a big-ass project.
It's a huge project.
So, it's different than, like, okay, we have this FEMA disaster, we get reimbursement for it, we fix it, or we fix it, then we get reimbursement for it. This is like a very, very expensive, very big, very important project.
Yeah.
But it's gonna take us a long time to do it.
That's why we're gonna start ringing the bell now.
Yeah.
We're in the, we've put the pre-application in for a hazard mitigation grant. And it would be the phase grant, probably. The first phase would be the, um, engineering and the design. Second phase would be implementation, and there'd probably be multiple phases to the implementation.
Yep.
Multi-year. They, um, FEMA loves working with us. We, we know what we need. We know what we're doing, the total package apart and do what they need, so.
So, can we, is there-
We have the total package here.
So, is there a temporary fix for Brochus and the Civic Building, or do, or is it just like, we have to wait till?
They are responsible.
They're working on temporary fixers. And we're, we're working with them, with ideas, with people, and, um-
Permits.
Permits.
Help me navigate the permits.
The ball, the ball's in their court at this point right now. Um, but we're, this is our, this is our big, this is our big swing here. Um, the third thing is, again, another hazard mitigation grant, pre-application has been submitted for, uh, town-owned property below the Cottage Street Bridge. And this is where the convergence of the Porter Brook, or the, um, Cooper Brook comes in to Lemoil. And instead of the river leaving its banks at the Sawmill, we want it to leave its banks on the other side of the river and create a flood plain and flood storage for high water on that side of the Brook. So, we can, um, eliminate flooding when the Cooper Brook is looking for room to get into the Lemoil. And it doesn't have enough room, it leaves its banks up by Atkins Field and Floodscram and Street and Cottage Street. So, this is to, this, this part is a big, um, this is a big, also a great, big project. And the rail trail and the Black Iron Bridge are going to be equations of that.
Yeah.
So, we need to look for more water storage, um, and that kind of adds to the fourth bullet. And that is where the water drains. And that is down by the Yellow Barn, the L B R T, Lemoil Valley Ford and our wastewater treatment facility. So, basically, the water's leaving the banks at the Cooper Brook, at the Lemoil River, up on that area. And it's looking to get back into the river channel below the Jackson Dam because there's not enough flood storage in the lake. And then the lake is a whole different project and we're not gonna get into that right now.
But if we could get more water on the other side of the rail trail, we could push that water all the way up top and it'll all help us. For our-
Yeah, it's a lot of storage.
Yeah.
It's a lot of storage.
There's a reason that could, that can be achieved relatively efficiently, in grand scheme of things, by either lowering the rail trail or putting tubes in and stuff.
But we were there, we were there today and I've had conversations with B Trans about, um, water getting back under the L B R T, um, when it's on the wastewater plant side.
Right.
And that, that's a problem. And they're aware of it, and I'm a little surprised that they didn't take out all that, wash, uh, that sediment.
They just left it.
Yeah, they just left it.
The big dam.
That's a problem.
Yep. Kristen wanted it.
Yeah.
So, this, this particular project would be starting with the spilling project. And there's funds coming from FEMA from the Fall that would, could be, um, approached for that type of project, what he's discussing.
Before we lose the thread back to your, uh, engaging Stan Tech or, or wanting to continue that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna continue that work.
Yeah.
Just to make sure we give it a nod.
Yeah.
So, I think you need a motion, actually, because it's your, you're actually, so, ri- so, part of the river, the river provides us with this help with doing the benefit cost analysis and engineering and budget, et cetera. But they are looking for legislative, um, approvals of, of the guiding factors, like, what are you looking, what's the most important?
Well, it's not a blank chat, so.
No, it's, it's what do you, I mean, um, you should listen to this whole thing and, and see if there's something you feel is more important than what we've identified is more important. Because that's, that's what they're looking for, is what the select board is.
Alright, so, let's carry the, continue hearing the whole thing.
This is a living, breathing document.
Yeah.
I tried to reduce it, there's parts you're not gonna have to go through.
So, then we have our wastewater treatment facility. The last conversation I had with our engineers was make a plan, do the cost-benefit analysis and move in the facility. Getting it up out of the way and putting it in, we'll do it. We gotta do it. We can't keep putting a million dollars into this thing every time it floods. We're at seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, our fire station, if we move that, uh, it's a picture of the fire department moving the trucks at two AM. Um, that's when I came down into town on the eleventh this, this year. Um, if we move that, you can create more flood storage, uh, when it leaves the Cooper Brook and we have an RFP in place, move that up to Creamery Road, we're gonna start that. That project's ongoing, started and ongoing. You can scroll up. And then, we have some flood mitigation efforts, um, basically backflow prevention devices, uh, places for them to pump the water, uh, in the event of high water. Right now, they're pumping it, and then it goes over into the neighbor's yard, and then they gotta pump it from the neighbor's yard into the next neighbor's yard. So, we gotta find a place for the water to drain out of that area. Kristen, can you-
It was the worst, it was, everyone else had less water in their houses, these, the people in this area had more. It was more because Cooper and Lemoil backed up to them. So, everyone on Wolf Cut had less, over on Cooper, the other side of Cooper had less, even Mill had less. This section had more.
And some of the residents down there, they, um, they purchased a, uh, trash pump and they were able to use it in a bunch of basements. So, they, community came together down there and had some equipment, they were able to help each other out with it.
And that's the type of grant funding we're gonna use to, to do in the Fall. It's, um, working with Atkins Field as well to see if they can do something with their granite shed to elevate and allow the water to go underneath it, versus just elevate and make another dam. Um, so, it's going to be, uh, community-based and sustainable, working with natural, like, um, sink basements, et cetera, like, things with water. I, I mean, I don't know all the crazyology, but it's, a lot of the community members down there are excited to.
And then, the, the brick funding is building resilient, uh, something communities.
Yeah.
Buildings and infrastructure and communities, something like that.
And, so, are there, for the houses down there in the Grand Street neighborhood, are there residents that are interested in elevating?
No, most of them are older houses that would not be, um-
Elevatable.
Elevatable. Um, a lot of them are dry flood roofing down there. Um, Reg Phelps had half an inch of water in his basement and, so, he's been, he's been kinda there. He's the one that actually bought the trash pump. So, they've been working together down there and they need a little thing, I mean, they're, they're doing a lot of the work that is the start down there.
Okay.
And I mean, a lot, and honestly, a lot of those houses down there, I would go out on a limb and say, probably all of them always had these sub-hops.
Yes, they did, but, but they said that it used to get pumped by the, they used to get pumped to the river or something to them?
Maybe, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so-
It's, the water table is very stark.
Yes, a lot of them have, have installed some of them, yeah.
They do not need any-
Additional water.
They've already got a major bubbling. Like, Al, for example, he, his pumps, you know, he's got two sub-hops. They kept up and stays up all night.
Yeah. So, then-
Come put them into the neighbor.
Plainsville Brook, I sent an email to B Trans this week. They're looking at, uh, woody debris.
You know, I drove by there today and I'm like, you know what? In the old days, you'd buy a can of beer and have us a bonfire right there.
Um, the Streamwell Tracut guys said, go at it.
Yeah, so they're changing their tune a little bit on the woody debris because it's damaging infrastructure.
That's true. There's a lot there.
What about getting back in the river and start digging them out?
We're not going there right now.
Well, dig it, at least dig the debris out, that's, the work is up there.
Well, it's like last year, Danny, when I was talking to the state lady down there, we lost over two, three feet of storage on Oak Street alone. It's like last year, Danny, one of us talking to the state lady down there, we lost over two, three feet of storage on Wolf Street alone. By that filling it.
Yeah.
Now you get no plans for nobody to dig anything else.
I agree, but anyway, sorry.
They'll find it. This is exciting stuff.
So is that, so you're saying, for the woody debris, if they're saying, go for it, that could be, could that be also in kind, like?
In-house is cheaper.
No, no, what I'm saying is folks with excavators in towns could basically take, I mean, our little letter can do some, you know what I mean? Like, could we basically have areas that are cleared out by?
There's so much there.
What are you gonna do? We're not gonna let you burn it.
No, 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 I'm just saying, like, if, basically, okay, so if you're, if you live on the river, and there's a bunch of trees, and there are a bunch of them are in the river, this is saying, go ahead and clean them out.
Yep.
If it's your property.
Yep. I would.
That's basically what I just heard.
Hmm, that's from right there, because it's blocking.
It's not in the minutes, but yeah.
No, no, I, that's, I'm just trying to understand if it's like.
Right there.
We're not gonna stop you from doing work.
Right there is blocking.
The problem there is if nobody's property is gonna deal with it, it's, it's just there.
Well, it's V-AM Gilchrist's property.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, if that is a bit.
Talk to the landlord. But V-Trans is, is starting to do this in, in.
They made it worse.
In, in areas that are.
They made it worse the day before the flood.
It needs to happen before.
Because they piled it up.
Yeah.
And said, it needs to be moved.
They made it smaller and piled it up. They cut it up and made it smaller, easier to move and put it on the river.
Well, and they didn't anticipate it.
Yeah. So these are just, um, damaged roads and culverts, some updates of what the road crew has fixed. Um, you can look at that at your leisure. These are the six bridges, um, and their status. Talk about, we've talked about all the bridges tonight, basically what, what's going on with those. Um, this is our buyout list.
For 2023.
For last year. Um, there's the brush street house that we wanna try to remove, uh, quickly.
Is the other structure on that property coming down?
The garage, yeah, it would be, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna take that down now. We'll, we'll wait. Um, and then talking about, uh, additional buyouts that have come in, requests for buyouts, um, after this flood. And then the Modification Wildlife is interested in creating more floodplain and river restoration with two, possibly three properties along the Haynesville Brook. Um, we have, uh.
Haynesville Brook is, follows Route 15 after, after.
We were talking about this earlier.
15.
Yeah, where we were just talking about. That's a tributary to the Lemoil, right by Route 16 Bridge. Um, and then elevation assistance on properties down on the Cooper Brook, um, in the Lemoil River. We have pre-applications in for those. Um, and then our business, businesses, businesses that were impacted, um, and that were, Kristen has been in contact with pretty much all of them. So we're just having conversations on how we make them more resilient and stay in business. Um, so we can continue to have a bustling town and good economic development.
And those conversations have happened already with businesses?
Some, they were all contacted and talked to personally. But I haven't had the what do you want to do conversation. They're still trying to figure out. I mean, the first conversation I had with them, some of them thought they were fine, and then discovered they had foundation issues. So, so then it's, it's a process.
Yeah. And then, uh.
Has Walgreens said when they're gonna reopen, they have any idea?
I think OP is the one talking to that.
They have their, uh, mobile pharmacy in, but I think they're dragging their feet a little bit, trying to figure that out.
Well, some of these, especially bigger corporations, I doubt they're not gonna continue, but.
I have a meeting on the 13th with the Vice President of Tops Market for real estate. So I have, I have sneaking suspicion I know it's.
So you'll know more after that.
Yeah. Um, and then there's three locations along the river, the Lemoil River, that I'd like to purchase backflow, uh, backflow valves on. Uh, Tom got a quote of about fifteen thousand dollars for those three rubber valves. And that rents water from backing up into the storm drains on Wolf Street.
Didn't, I let me get that.
There's only one down there.
There's, there's one.
I'm impressed with one.
They weren't, they weren't installed because of the price.
We only ever put in one.
It's either like five thousand.
You made the lawsuit that we're.
Second.
I already made, I already made the.
So approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We gotta order those.
Yeah.
You ordered those, yeah?
No.
Okay. So, pre-application in for banking, we're still working with FEMA on the School Street slide. Uh, we're hoping that, I'm thinking that we are able to use, once we blast the sectional ledge up at the pit, we're able to use that material to stabilize the bank on School Street. We'll be able to pay ourselves to use that material through FEMA project. That is the trick, is we use our material and pay ourselves for it through FEMA.
That's gonna be a lot of material.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should see.
We're also, we're also in the queue for hazard mitigation.
Yeah, we're also in the queue.
We're also in the queue for the hazard mitigation, right? If we have to do something differently.
Okay.
Covering all bases.
The watershed study we've talked about at a last meeting on Cooper Brook, um, flood hazard mitigation. No, you're good.
It's the parcels that we don't own that have asked for buyout are either at, at FEMA or still in the mitigation.
And then this is just some community stuff, um, and some emergency operations center generator at the PD. Long-term community recovery plan we've talked about with FEMA working group. Uh, then we're looking to get neighbor to neighbor trained up to be, uh, local, to do the local emergency management plan and keep that torch going. And work on our supply center and our infrastructure to support that. And, uh, we have a, we have a neighbor to neighbor partnering, partnering with neighbor to neighbor to do a community meeting in September. So to probably rule this plan out a little bit more broadly. There it is.
That's it?
So, so the, um, river program is for several towns, including ours. They don't necessarily have the funding to do more than one for each town, but, um, so we're asking them theoretically to do free because we need more.
Free, free lots.
Free programs, free projects. Help us with free.
And three are?
They're the first, the first three that we identified.
So you're, you're asking us to agree or to go?
Or, or disagree. If there's something else that you feel is, yes.
Oh, those are all really connected. So I don't know how you do, as you just said, I don't know how you do the, the floodplain work without changing downtown, without like.
The one piece that's in play right now is the pre-application for the Yumbuck River and the Hays is, um, has already been accepted to go to application stage, so it's in a different point. It's like, it's, 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 it's in the door first. I put that application in the day after it opened.
So I'm good with their, their foundation and powers.
I mean, you're not gonna see excavators rolling in next week. This is a long-term approach, but we need to get a plan in place. And we need to, like I said, beat the drum and get people on board to get this stuff, priority.
Get it done.
Yeah, we can add, say that we have select word support.
You do.
And community support, that's the neighbor to neighbor. Yeah, so.
Okay, so we could.
Last night, to support the, uh, river.
Assistance flood resiliency recovery.
Pick that up for me a little bit.
The flood resiliency recovery pack.
Yes.
Prior.
With the priorities as.
As presented, yeah.
Okay.
Somebody want to second that?
I'll second that.
Uh, that would have a lot of discussion, but is there any more? All favor, please say aye.
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 And so as everybody's emotion carries.
Good job, you guys.
Yeah, I mean, holy cow, it's a lot of work.
Can we, can I just talk to something related to the presentation or related to all this? Um, it's, like, as Eric already said, it's incredible what our staff has been doing. I'm really nervous about our capacity with all of this. And I think we have, we have really, really amazing people in all departments, but there's only so much that is humanly possible. And it sounds like we're already potentially have, things are gonna be tight money-wise because of all of these natural disasters. But I really think we need to think about how we can support all of our departments. Like, do we need to get somebody else in the road crew? Even for the next year? Even to get through all this work, do we need to have somebody else in the town manager's office, even just to get through this work? And that's, no, but I think that's up to this level, or that's up to us to say we need.
Resiliency coordinator position, that's a part-time person that takes a little load off.
Whoever OP thinks is needed. I, I, but I think it's, I think we need to.
Yes, so can I officially ask you, OP and Kristen, you two?
And Casey, Casey is part of this.
Well, all of you, if you come back in two weeks, I think I would go around here and say, I think we need to add some staff for the next year. And, and I don't know if we have to call the money, it doesn't matter. We need to have it. We can't do it without you guys. And God forbid, we get burned out. It's just, you guys keep saying.
We'll talk, I think we can talk.
I'm okay.
All right.
Well, I'm also thinking about Tom, and we just added potentially two pretty big projects to his plate tonight. So I think that wherever, basically, I'm just looking at, at you, wherever you think you might need some people.
I think summer employment, um, I've had conversations with, uh, the State of Vermont, Department of Labor, getting somebody in here to be able to do the mowing, do the trash on Main Street, do like parking wreck kind of stuff.
Yeah.
It might be time to sort of select for it and decide whether to hire someone.
But we can put it in our budget for next summer. And I think we've had internal conversations and we've had off, you know, like sidebar conversations about bringing somebody, a temp on for road crew stuff. Um, yeah, we could, I would love, I had a grant in place to hire a staff engineer, uh, to do some of these projects, but hiring a staff engineer comes with a team of engineers, um, so that kind of fell through. But, uh, project manager, I think, is something we're gonna need, um, moving forward when we get a lot of these projects kind of, uh, off the ground. And I think a project manager could help them move them forward faster. Um, so I, I do agree with you. I think that there is, um, places where we could add some personnel to increase our capacity, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna rush into it and have it be wasted.
Have it, like, hire somebody into the position where you really need it, at a different position.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it is, it is on the horizon, for sure.
I've been upset about it for months. I've been trying to, every time I talk, talk about it, OP and Tom say no, Kristen says no, so.
Well, we're all check.
Well, I think we need to talk about it, it's like, we're double.
I know, I, I think, I, I, I do, I agree with you, and I think it's important, but we're also, um, I, I have some fiscal responsibilities.
Well, ultimately, there are fiscal responsibilities, I'm sure there's fiscal responsibilities. And it's our, our job.
I get it.
To make sure that things are done, you know, the way we feel it should be done, and when we all feel that we need more staff and.
I, I feel like I, that we should take our direction on which more staff.
Well, we've strongly suggested to please come back in two weeks with that.
Yeah.
And I still need with a great deal of resistance.
No, there's no resistance. I agree that we need staff. I just wanna hear them.
Right, at, at all levels, so we need, we are behind on everything at all levels with a mounting ahead of us of unknowns and, and workloads that we've never, ever seen before as a town. So, did you, anyone look at the lawn up front? Look, what you, go, look at the brush, you can't even drive up to Lower Cherry Street. You know, there's just so much stuff and, and, and you, tonight, Eric said, you stopped in his office and see how much flood has taken over every single thing they do.
That's true.
What do you think they all did before we had floods?
They ran the town.
So who's running the town now?
Well, we are, they are.
They still are.
You're all superheroes, but bottom line is it shouldn't get done. That's about, I mean, you're doing a great job, but you can only do so much.
But I think you said it really well, in that where is there the opportunity for something that's not also a lot of management, right? Like, does that mean hiring somebody for the rest of the season to take care of trash, take care of mowing, to take care of sidewalk, whatever? That's like not a super trained up position. It's not gonna tax Tom in terms of, because that's the other thing. Adding people is adding work for managers. So, so what is that, like, tiny low-hanging fruit? And then can we just say, okay, let's take out fifteen grand in the general fund to pay whoever that is? It could be somebody to, like, come in and organize files. I don't care. It's up to you. But like, but is there something small like that, that's not like a big, big, big position, that could just help whatever department it is? I don't know, but.
Sure, of course, I mean, that's another one, as we.
So, we can also, instead of, so there's, so there's, there's a thought that we could also hire a contractor to do some of that. And spread the love into the business community.
Yeah.
Well, we could hire a contractor to do the trash.
Right.
I mean, they come and pick it up every day, every other day.
Yeah.
You could hire a long-sold for.
That's what I'm saying.
For the next month, I have, of course, not like.
So I'd like to just, I mean, we still have a fair number of things to get through tonight, and I guess.
My being is we wanna help.
And I, so in summary.
I appreciate it.
We're supportive of what you guys need, and so, uh, yeah. And if you need to come, if there, if there's small things that are, that you should just do. If there's things that you need our approval, bring them back and we'll be supportive.
Yeah.
And with that, I think you do, so that's what I'm gonna push us on.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, I don't even know where we are.
I'll make the motion that.
Bud Stevens.
That we appoint Bud Stevens to the Harvard Planning Commission for three-year terms, 16, 30, 27, and change coal to the first ultimate.
I'm a.
On the, uh.
My intermission.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. And then.
My chance for you, Bud?
No.
No.
This is your next one.
Oh, he's tired. He's tired for a while.
There we go. All right, next is item five, select for to consider cannabis, cannabis license renewal for naked hemp. Uh, this is a renewal, and we had something in our stash, I think.
No compliance of diversity.
Right, that's what we had.
I can motion to, uh, a cannabis license renewal for naked hemp.
Second.
Any discussion?
Here, if you have any questions.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
How's it going?
Good.
Not at, how's it going?
Good. Good weather this year.
Good weather.
Really?
It's an outdoor deal.
Both.
Both.
Greenhouse and outside, too.
Good, brother. I know there was quite an influx there at the beginning, and everybody was gonna be a billionaire. There's a lot of empty fields nowadays.
Lot, lot of work.
Lot of work.
All right, so we have the motion in the second, so all in favor of approving the cannabis license for naked hemp, please say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries, thanks for coming in. Um, next, item six, select for to consider giving a waiver to Harbick Electric for their handicapped accessible ramp to be in the town right of way.
That's me.
It's already there.
No, sorry.
It's already there, right?
No.
What?
The ramp.
No, they don't have it.
Oh, they don't have it.
They don't have it.
So they don't, they don't have a ramp.
So they've always had a ramp out back, but why is that?
The outback doesn't, it's.
Oh, they changed it.
Designed inside, it can't, it can't take you in, doesn't mean.
It's gone.
Yeah.
So I, I don't care.
So he has submitted a plan to me that would keep it out of the town right of way. But my concern is that if he gets, if they get into this project, they have thirty days to do this for the fire marshal. They get into the project and discover that because of the, the pitch of the, um, ramp, they have to actually swing it and come down towards the road. I wanna have them have that ability.
It's not gonna impact the sidewalk.
No.
It's not gonna be in the road, it's a right of way.
No, so right of here, right of way goes beyond.
Now make a motion that we give a waiver to the Harbick Electric for the handicapped accessible ramp.
It may not be needed in charge of just.
If need.
If need.
Isn't there a fee, is there a fee for that waiver?
No. Uh, second?
So, yeah, second, more discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I don't know, I was thinking the same.
Motion carries.
I'm, I'm sorry, and who made the motion?
I did.
Danny.
I interrupted.
And second was? Q?
Yep.
Okay. Item seven, select for to consider accepting a proposal from one of the submissions for the design and engineering of Harbick Farms Road Bridge over the Porter Brook.
So I read the.
And authorize town manager to execute it on that, okay, there you go.
I made the motion that we authorize the town manager to execute the contract for the Riverbys River Bridge, um, with the, with the contract that he feels, uh.
But he's gonna throw that.
Well, so I. Well, so I read them, okay, if you read them, one guy's like a sewer guy. Did you read him?
Mm-hmm.
And one guy seems to be a younger guy in Vegas, it's proposal was, yeah, I'd give it, and then there was one that was pretty good. So, you choose, you've worked, you know him.
I.
Do you have a preference?
So, you, you just made that motion.
It's your recommendation.
I made the motion, yeah.
That you throw it on the town manager.
Yeah.
No, what's your preference, I should ask you first.
Um, I think the Tyler Billingsley East Engineering, um, is based on, uh, a, a number of project budget wasn't provided. It's based on a FEMA cost curve, so basically, he's taking the cost of the FEMA project. Um, and he would get a, a percentage of that project. I don't really know, um, how that all comes about, it's nothing I really wanna deal with.
We wanna.
I wanna.
Tyler Lee, or whatever.
I think, um, it's, I'm down to Mumley and New England Consulting Engineers.
Definitely had a lot of wastewater stuff.
I mean, they've both done big projects, Culverts and Bridges.
Right, no, no, I, I'm not saying they, they couldn't do it, I was saying.
I think they're, I think they're both, um, I think they're both capable of doing this project.
We already discussed, we have multiple projects, we've got a pipe.
Yes.
I don't care.
And the bottom line, uh, New England Consulting Engineers is thirty-six-five, and Mumley is twenty-five. I think it's twenty-five. Uh, and he's doing our Act Two Fifty Amendment, it's twenty-five-five, so.
Were you able to verify their, we have a little, like, an email exchange?
Their references?
No, the, um, the, their, uh, the.
That was the amended cost, the budget.
That was the amended?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause originally, they included the cost to do the whole, um.
Hydralisk.
Hydralisk study, which we can provide to them.
Yes. Okay.
And they're, alright, so you think what we have, what you have now, what we have now are apples to apples, they're both providing the same service.
Yeah.
Proposing to.
The, the difference, um, with New England Consulting Engineers is they have a principal engineer, a project manager, and an engineer, um, and a drafting tech. So they have a team.
Yeah.
Or Mumley has two, and I don't know what the workload is for each firm.
Should I just get a name?
Yeah, they, they both say they can complete it for the twenty, I, in my request, I asked for plans and bidding to be ready for the spring construction season, which I think they can both do easily. Um, so I just don't know what their capacity is, so.
And I thought the New England one didn't include all the bid, bidding support.
It did.
It did?
Yep, it even, it even talked about construction management.
I saw construction management, but I thought they were.
So there really is a little bit more in there, likely, because.
And they, they created, they, you know, their, their proposal is a little bit more detailed, they have a, a budget, or they have a timeline in there.
Yeah.
But that money is theoretically reimbursed, that's reimbursed, so, but we have to pay for it upfront.
Correct.
And this is, so just, this is getting a little muddled for me, so this is reimbursed from the flooding from.
Twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four, sorry, twenty-twenty-three.
Right. Right, this is the permanent work for the management, twenty-twenty-five.
From twenty-three.
Right, and again, we don't have a policy for that declaration.
No, but I'm just making sure, so we all, 'cause we already know for twenty-twenty-three, we already know we've got an emergency declaration, we already know that FEMA's reimbursing.
Yes.
And at what rate.
Yeah.
So. And the rate is?
Seventy-five percent.
And.
And the state kicks in twelve and a half percent, seven and a half percent. Work.
Okay.
Good enough.
So, you're still with Mumley?
I, I can go with either, maybe I agree with everything that was said about in the regular, their proposals.
Yeah, really impressive.
I could do that, sorry.
I think the New England one, it feels like it's more thorough.
Yeah.
Like there aren't gonna be like hiccups along the way, and oops, it's ten thousand dollars more than we thought. You know?
I say, we've got plenty of work coming down the pipe, however many shares we want.
Yeah, I, I, I really think forever.
Are you confident that either of them could do the work and get it done in time?
Then you choose.
Then, I mean, my inclination then is go with the one that's lower cost.
Okay.
But I don't know, like.
Yeah, hopefully.
I mean, I agree that the proposal from New England is a.
I don't know.
It's a better written proposal, it has more detail, and they're backing it up with more staff in their proposal.
Yeah, but that's not how it's gonna.
But it, it doesn't matter if they can get it done on our timeline.
How they do it.
Right.
They've got enough time for one guy to do it.
Right, now then. Yep.
Yeah. So, I can motion to approve the Mumley, uh, Mumley proposal for the design and engineering of the Harvick Farms Road Bridge over Porter Brook, and authorize the town manager to execute a contract for the work.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
So basically, no one ever seconded his motion, it's just.
Dropped, yeah.
Yeah, it died.
Sorry, man.
It happens, it happens.
And you made a motion and nobody cared a second of it.
I feel like we're not here.
Uh, item eight is select board to consider accepting a proposal for the emergency bridge repair work for the Riverside Farms Bridge, and authorize town manager to execute a contract, another bridge.
Yeah.
I didn't see.
I didn't hear anything about that.
They came in today.
Yeah, they were doing it today, so.
I made them do today.
Perfect, so we can.
Didn't get them in, they're in there, but I didn't get them in.
But they're in here, so you're gonna present them to us?
Yep.
Great.
Yep, so we have CCS, um, constructors, they submitted a bid, um, they've done a lot of work on big projects, yeah.
Can you just give a simple overview of what the project is?
Yep, so, um, the scope of work is to place grout bags under abutment one, which is the abutment on, or abutment two, which is the abutment on Route Sixteen side. Place grout bags, uh, wet grout bags underneath the footing of the abutment, armor to the abutment. Uh, abutment one, fix the bridge seat, install four, um, girders with spec steel that we spec'd in RFP that came from the bridge, uh, team, state bridge team. And then install bridge diaphragms, two in each bay, and install two-by-six, uh, pressure treated on end clip to the.
Now together.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, so that was put out in a request for bids, um, I received three from CCS, uh, Constructors in Mooresville, which, uh, all three contractors are, um, well recommended. Um, CCS Constructors, Gravel Construction, and Winterset. The lump sum bid for CCS Constructors was a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Gravel Construction was two hundred and twelve thousand, six twenty-five. And Winterset is a hundred and sixty thousand flat.
We have a winner?
Yeah.
Still have like a bridge like that nowadays.
Can I just ask a quick money question?
Yeah.
Before we jump into this?
We don't have enough.
Yeah, that was, that's my question, is where, like where are we at?
I mean, we're okay right now, but it's, in the next few months, I mean, we might start getting some tax payments, it's gonna help.
Even with the bank, even with.
We have the line of credit.
We haven't started using the lines of credit.
Right, I mean, it's not, I mean, that's, if we ever need to use line of credit this year.
So we have, uh, we have an abutment, or we have an abutment, we have, we have many abutments, but we have that retaining wall project that's, that we got a bid for two point four.
Nine.
Two point nine, um, that we're gonna need to borrow money for. We're trying to figure out, we had a conversation from, with FEMA today about it, they're not thrilled about the number, they had a cost estimate of five hundred thousand dollars.
And they're like, yeah, well, you've got a lot of explaining to do, why all of a sudden it's two million dollars more, or whatever.
Right.
So, I have a feeling we're gonna be arguing with them on that.
For a while.
Yeah.
Because they're like insisting that, um, we're doing upgrades, and that all of them, they only want it back exactly the way it is, and that's all they're gonna pay for.
We weren't bedrock there, so I, I don't understand a lot of the problem. And you're not bedrock, when you're at bedrock, you're at bedrock, right, so it should be easy to.
The micro piles are what the engineer is calling.
That's all it is.
That's what they're calling for, the micro piles, and they're very, very expensive.
Right, I don't understand why you need a bedrock, bedrock.
Yeah, well, we can have it reengineered.
You know what I'm saying, I just, I have to understand.
What's that?
Let's not get sidetracked.
Yeah.
So, alright.
So I'm not taking our cash on a daily basis, obviously.
Believe me, she's elected me now.
Yeah, I'm not worried about our cash, Casey.
I mean, we're okay right now, um, but as I explained to him, I do feel like we're bleeding money, like just.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we are.
I mean, our accounts payable runs, our, you know, when it's payable weakness, an account's payable, it's nothing for us to pay out, six hundred thousand dollars every two weeks, like it's, that was the last week we run and payable, like two weeks ago was like six hundred thousand, and then.
It's almost off on budget these things.
Yeah. And then, of course, we have all this flood work, um, that, which he wanted me to update, for example, we've already spent. Um, I should have been, so about seventy-five thousand on roads, but I know there's more invoices to come, at least another probably twenty-five grand, so that's a hundred grand. We've paid out seventy-five with more to come, um, the wastewater plant, we're at, I think, only fifteen, but we have some big invoices out there pending, um, stuff that we're gonna have to replace, um. So, yeah, it's, um, the money is going out fast, it's going out fast.
I make a motion that we, uh, authorize the town manager to execute a contract with.
Winterset?
Winterset Construction for the Riverside Farms Bridge.
Second.
More discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that's everyone, so motion carries, and, uh, well, also just thanks, a shout out, thanks to everybody for bidding on that too, because we really we need it, and like Danny said, we got lots of projects, please keep bidding.
Yeah.
It was definitely nice to see three bids, 'cause we're not used to that, so many projects, okay, zero or none, I mean, zero or one.
Being on Route Two, like Monday and Tuesday were part of the last flood, Winterset moved all day long, all their equipment, you know, down Route Two. And then the flood hit, and they tried to truck it all back then, um, they couldn't get to their own place.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Those water, I mean.
Alright, next is item nine, select board to review and consider approving the sale of real estate policy.
So, I wanna mention, um, from the last meeting, the, this one, two, three, four, what defines a conflict of interest? I took that from the town's existing conflict of interest policy, so that it matched.
Yeah.
So those are the four situations that are in our existing policy, and I felt that it was important that they're consistent. So one, two, three, four probably isn't what you saw last time, but it's directly from our existing conflict of interest policy.
So the, the only question I had about that is that that makes the same thing exist in two places, so when you update one, you need to update the other. And we just need to be mindful of that in the future, whereas we could, you know, you could just refer to.
Yeah.
You have to follow the town's conflict of interest and attach it.
That is true, that, um, we could eliminate all of staying that and.
I mean, it's a pretty fixed conflict of interest anyways, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not really, I, I, I think it's okay only because the odds of that policy getting updated soon are a lot less likely. If it was like a financial policy, maybe, those get updated more often, so I think it's okay to leave, because the likelihood of that getting updated is slim to none, I guess.
I think the motion we approve the sale of real estate policy.
Second.
Uh, discussion? It's good, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item ten, select board to discuss pedestrian bridge project. Um, you want me, I can, I can discuss this, so we had, uh, we put out a bid for a second time, and, uh, the response was, um, not great.
One, one bid.
One bid. And one of the ones we had the previous round, we didn't, and we knew. And so, despite the fact that we did have new people, we reached out, we advertised, we reached out, we got new people to come to the site meeting. The numbers are big, they're bigger than our budget, we're a little extended already on this project, and, um, when we, the, who are we, are we the bridge committee?
We're the team, the team.
The team that's been working on the bridge, Matt.
With C C group.
Well, without C C group, so we met, and we decided that we, while we could, it, it just becomes insurmountable, because even though the gap is not huge, it's not insurmountable, but for this building season, it feels insurmountable, because the time you can get work in the river is only July one through September one.
October.
October one. But October one means you only have August and September, and we don't have anybody on board yet, and we have to go find some money first. And so it just doesn't seem realistic that we can do that this year, and also at the same time, our town staff is managing all these other flood-related projects that weren't anticipated when this was coming up, so what our bridge team felt was, we still wanna do it.
We're going to do it.
We're still gonna do it, but we're, we're not gonna do it this year.
It totally makes sense, my, only, I only have two questions about it, one is, we've already waited. This is, this is my big, my big first project, it's a select board member, so we've already waited, whoever that is. Can we, can we keep those two big pots of USDA funds?
We're gonna de-obligate them.
Okay, so then that, so if we de-obligate those, then that puts us at seven hundred in the shortfall, right?
We're, we're gonna talk to our, we're gonna schedule a meeting, our community development coordinator is working on getting all of our funders in the same room, and we're gonna schedule that meeting, probably for the week of the twelfth, and, uh, have that conversation on our, our strategy on what we need to do with the funding.
Because what we, ideally what we want is we want all our funders to understand that we're still doing the project, which isn't feasible for us to do this year, so how can they, how can we keep their support without creating problems on their end by giving out to this company, this old.
Well, wouldn't it also make sense to wait until, which might be a really long ways from now, but if we're redoing the entire corridor of downtown, wouldn't we potentially have to remove the bridge to do that?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's a pretty no-brainer argument that we kinda have to wait.
The retaining wall has to be fixed first.
Yeah.
Well, it would just get in the way, it would just get in the way of that bigger, more important project, right?
Absolutely, we also talked about that, too, okay.
But hopefully they understand that and.
And we're not even sure, I mean, we might need a, we need, might need a longer bridge spec, because that bank is starting to give away over there.
Yeah.
Certainly a change.
So.
So we don't need a motion, we're just gonna.
No, it's just an update, unfortunately, we're, we're, unfortunately, we're still working on it, years, three years.
Four.
Four.
Four. October twenty-fourth, so four years.
Alright.
I guess if there's a positive spin on this, it's that if we, um, if we wait until after the, the river work is done, with the bridge in, we have high confidence that that bridge is gonna last, if we'd already somehow managed to put the bridge in last year.
It might be in a whole different place.
Yeah, it might.
Or if we were in the middle of the construction.
Yes.
Equipment.
Yeah.
Is everything, is everything, well, how do we go?
Yeah.
Exactly, could have been bigger.
So, yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's just what it is. Alright, select board reports.
I have some good news.
Yay!
I was, I got an email today from the Vermont Arts Council, and the townhouse has received the cultural facilities grant that will support, um, the, uh, the lift and the accessibility.
Oh, that's great.
It's half, it's like fourteen, almost fifteen thousand.
Awesome.
So it's less from our, our programming money that we'll have to spend on the lift. Yeah, so that's good news.
Yeah, that's great.
I just have a quick one, the, um, Equity Committee is working with the Vermont Community Foundation to put together an application, um.
I just have a quick one, the, um, Equity Committee is working with the Vermont Community Foundation to put together an application, um, for, uh, so the Vermont Community Foundation has a grant available only to communities that are part of the ideal program, which Harvard is one of them. Um, and so what we're looking at is doing, uh, a grant program, or basically, um, going to be working with community partners to help them be more equitable and inclusive. Um, more about that later, I just wanted to let you know that we're working on that. Um, and then, I also went very briefly, because of Milo, but I was there, um, the East Harvard, uh, brainstorming session last week was awesome.
For better connections.
For better connections, um, there was a huge turnout, I think everybody was really happy about it, um, so I think that's like, would be something really, really good, um, and important for East Harvard.
Great. Other select board reports? Any new business?
I have one thing, just, um, if you can spread the word to all of the committees within the town, um, that when they wanna hire people to do work, they really should communicate with our office first, because what's happening is I receive an invoice, and then I'm trying to chase down W nine and insurance, and I'm not employee work agreement, da-da-da-da-da. So, it's just, um, you know, it's, it's really helpful on our end to not have to chase that down after the fact, because, yeah.
If they hired you, I should have spent any insurance.
Right, and that's the other thing, because we actually have people where they did the work, and I was unable to get insurance, because their insurance company said, well, we don't insure them for that type of work, so we can't give you a certificate. So, what happens, we pay workers' comp on what we paid them.
Yeah.
So...
And then it's also, did we go through the proper procurement to hire the contractors?
Yeah, and I mean, some of them are really small, but anything, if you've got a sole proprietor, or an LLC, and we pay them more than six hundred dollars, we have to send them a ten ninety-nine, which means I need all of that stuff. So, um, that's all I ask, just to let us know you're working with somebody before the fact, so we can get it.
Make a little note when they come to budget time, and they're done, none of us, we're gonna show them.
Good point, good point, but you're the one.
I think a lot of them probably didn't get recognized.
Right, and, and I'm not like, it's just, I'm not trying to be mean about it, it's just that, that's the reality, it just creates a lot of extra work.
It's something else you're doing, yeah.
Creates more work.
It just creates more work, like trying to chase it down after the fact.
Exactly.
So, and sometimes, I guess, if we can't get it, and then we end up paying workers' comp on those amounts.
I have an old business.
Old business.
Are we still in new business? I think we should make another announcement about the jobs that are open, uh, at the yellow bar.
Uh, that's great, actually.
Oh!
The, the, for Cavett, anyway, they, they sent it go to their, go to their website, right? Is that what she said?
Yeah, I think she said it's posted on the Vermont job site, it's posted on, indeed, it's posted, yeah, and catpremire.com. Um, they're looking for people, and right here in Hardwick, but also other locations.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and just in general, um, so we did this site visit immediately prior to this meeting, and that project is committed to creating at least twenty-five new jobs, so, and this is,
And this is like, August fifteen is when they're planning to open, so, that side of it, in the, in the yellow bar itself, that retail space.
So, they're, they're getting all ramped up, uh, we also saw, um, Cory, and, uh, I see from, um, CAE was there, and Torus, what, told us about what they're doing, Torus run their side of the facility, and, you know, they're, they're growing as well. A lot of moving food around to, from the people who grow it to the people that eat it.
Yeah, so now, this is...
So, now, old business.
The two culverts at Harvard Times, is their cost estimate on installation? I'll bring a check out.
Um, yeah, it was, it's emergency work, but we can do enough to exceed.
I just, we're way upside down on that project already, continuing to be upside down, and it could be a big job. I mean, putting the job to Harvard is a project, it's not, and being able to do it right, I'm not, that's not my concern, but it's a lot of work to do it right.
Okay.
And that's again, the money we're gonna be sitting on for...
We're not gonna be ever get that money back.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, we will.
Oh, because it's a new project.
It's a new disaster.
Ha! See, yes, sir!
Once the declaration...
No, it's still just a cash flow issue.
No, but, yeah, they're, they're, whoops-a-daisy.
Yeah, that's...
Error we made. Um, Jesus, there's some good coming out of you.
I don't think we made any errors.
No, but you know what I'm saying, that was, but you know what I'm saying.
So, there's a silver lining, but we will do, um, I think we need to, uh, do a retroactive contract with them, the cost not...
I mean, just keep an eye on it, because it's a big project.
It is, it's important.
I think we ought to leave it that way for, just so you know, once it's in. Drag our feet on three places.
But we just approved that engineering.
We, yeah, well, we need to do it, we don't have, we certainly don't have to rush into it, that'd be, that'd be the, the other golden line, that this, this temporary fix, if it's gonna be a temporary fix, that will, will, we can live with for a summer or two, before we have to put the bridge down.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be probably
I just have one other case of old business, I know it's like, kind of last on our minds, it doesn't have to be a conversation tonight, but we talked, uh, a few months ago to the library about their contingency and where they are in their budget. And now that they're getting closer, or, I mean, it seems like their construction is going well, I'm just curious if we can, I mean, it seems like the library's building actively. I'm just curious, I'm just thinking a little bit, like if we're, if there's a budget update on that.
I don't see it moving very fast.
At the last meeting, they were waiting on a grant, I don't know if they got that grant or not, and they were kinda already at their contingency, so I'm just wondering where they are, because I don't wanna get hit with a surprise, if possible. I don't know if we can just ask.
Jesus, I'm paid for this.
I have, um...
We don't, I know it's like last of mine, but...
I, I usually try to attend one of their construction meetings, um...
You've been busy.
Um, once a month, but we can...
It doesn't have to be them visiting, it could just be literally like an hour.
We can figure it out.
I know what we have left for funds, I haven't seen a requisition in a while, so I'm expecting a really big one, but we have all of the CBS funds, six hundred thousand, so like, the next requisition, I bet, will be eight hundred thousand to a million. But we have six hundred thousand in CBS funds, they have, I think, a hundred and fifty left in the building fund, um, so we, we're not there yet, but they should hear about that grant really, really soon, um. It's beyond shovel-ready, it's like seventy percent done, so, there really is there, there is there, and that they shouldn't get the grant, but the Department of Libraries is just, it's a staffing issue, they've been, they basically don't have anybody to administer the grant. And they finally hired somebody, and it kinda sounds like there's some inexperience factors there, and so, it's taking a really long time to get the approval, um...
I'm just a little bit worried if we have a requisition that's one point two million, and we only have seven hundred and fifty in the pot, that's putting us back three hundred, so, and we're not gonna take it, I mean, they're working on it, which is great, but, um, it would just be nice to know kinda where we're at, just so we can be prepared if we need that to be.
Then Riard will be part owners of the library. Not the wrong one.
You say that, I'm not the other one. Toby.
Okay.
How many, can you give us any, uh, inside, I know that you interviewed a HED candidate, have you, they only have one that they're interviewing, or are they...
I think they have three.
They got to be...
Yeah, so, I went to that too, so they've had, um, I believe they've had more than a dozen applications come in, they're treating it not as, this is the deadline, but it's rolling, so they're just taking everything as they, as they come in. They interviewed, uh, first interviewed a couple people, and they brought somebody back for a second interview, which was what we attended, um...
So, it's moving, moving.
Yeah, I thought it went well.
Do you, I mean, if they had that many candidates, if they have them qualified, that's, that's still, in today's marriage, at any job, especially a job at that level.
Yeah, no, it's encouraging that there were a lot of applications, and that, um, you know, it felt like they're looking beyond just like basic qualifications, and they're looking for who we really want.
Well, I think they did, they need to find who they really want.
And they have a huge focus on, the, the board of commissioners has a huge focus on, um, uh, public relations, and, um, I think that the themes I heard were public relations being forward-looking and planning for our power system, so that, um, you know, we, we keep up, because there are a lot of changes happening now, there's a lot of electrification, and, um, you know, maintaining resiliency. Oh, the other big thing was recruiting, uh, staff, and getting the, and, and adding to the organization at the management part of it. I think they're all, they're focused on all the right things, as they're basically through the hiring process.
So, one more, is this, um, I see that, have there been other inquiries about the, um, other coin drop from August of twenty forty-five? Because the, um, Downtown Partnership would like to take that open slot and do a coin drop to support events downtown.
Okay.
Do I want to warn it? Do I put it as an agenda item in the next meeting, or?
I don't know, whatever we need to do, I mean, it's kind of in the half, and there wasn't anything else, so...
Yeah, we probably should just put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Yeah.
But nobody, nobody else was coming.
Nope.
August twenty twenty-five, that's what's still...
Right.
Yeah, August twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, um, there's some new business, and something to think about, uh, for cash flow stuff. Um, we have a blasting project going on, and some crushing, um, and creating more material for construction projects up at the pit. Um, I'd like to get authorization to, uh, use the proceeds from the sale of real estate at Cary Road for processing materials up at the pit.
I would like to make a motion that we use those funds for the operation of the pit, for a block, you know, that way, the gravel farm.
Well, the crushing alone, though, five seventy-five cubic yard, like, we're gonna beat up, well, that's blasting is fine, blasting, so that's the blasting, and then it's, uh, what it, what was it, six, uh, five or five for the crushing? I, I looked it up the other day, so...
That's for crushed gravel.
Oh, okay, so...
So, it's probably gonna be a little bit more.
Right, but that gravel and sand, they're in our budget already.
Yes, gravel and sand are in our budget.
Right, we have, we do, we do sixty thousand for gravel, and last year we spent, well, I spent all of that, but specifically on crushing, we spent thirty.
Spent half of our crushing, so, um, so we'll be able to use some of our crushing budget for crushing of stone, but we need some cash flow and some money budgeted for blasting.
Right.
That sounds like a great use of funds.
Do we have a purchase and sale agreement with those properties?
Uh, the one, uh, Cary Road, we are, it's in the works, so, we're drafting it up.
The other one probably won't come.
The other one, we won't have a purchase.
Jeff saw me today, he was ready to write a check, I'm just waiting.
Well, we gotta wait for the third.
Well, yeah, he's ready to go, so...
Yeah.
So, then, um...
So, it's coming, I wondered.
I guess that was our point, is using that seventy-five thousand from the real estate for the blasting and stuff for the pit, because that's, because we don't really have money in our, in our budget for it otherwise, so that would be a really smart use of those funds.
That'd be great, and create a lot of like much-needed material for our roads.
So moved, or whatever.
Okay, and then, we're gonna have a...
Do you, do you want a motion on that, or?
So, basically to use the proceeds of the Cary Road for blasting, crushing, gravelment, really doing...
Operations at Cory.
That's Cory, I'm just gonna go back.
My only question is, we have to wait thirty days anyway, we still have like fifteen days, can we just make it an agenda item for our next meeting, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna get the cash till after then anyway.
Yeah, why, let's not spend it the course of the day. But I wanna just put that in your...
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, just cases that you have.
We're, we're hopes, we're gonna be able to utilize a great deal of this initial blast for FEMA work in the next year.
Well, we're gonna just keep, we're just gonna keep going.
We need a lot of...
Well, yeah, that, that would be seen money, that's something fine, I'll be, uh, see it moving.
The few areas that we were able to put stay mat on their back roads, they held up, I know.
They held up a lot better.
Yeah, so, we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, we're in good shape, I was, I, I'm still, you guys don't know, I don't have to worry, it's something worth it, just getting some stuff ready, it's come a long way, we're on a lot of crushed gravel this year, that's basically material that was left laying around, that I've been, cracked it up and getting ready to crush, so that as well as water control and access relative, you can drive on that inside.
Do we have?
I would recommend a foot trip, I guess, and we're...
I would love to give a site visit.
It's a gorgeous piece of carpet, there's some palms on it, you got that row, do you say that?
Definitely. Do we have an indication of, um, for when we're able to blast, if we'll be able to make a stay mat product that will be comparable to what we buy?
You will, definitely, absolutely, once you get it, you know, that involves the next step, which is getting the pressure back.
Yeah, yeah.
But we'll sort the stone, once it blasts, and you sort it, and pass by it, and then, a lot of the bigger stuff we'll use, and then...
Yeah, great.
And honestly, probably next year, we'll crush wax.
Sure, because, because right now, we have a lot of, we have a lot of use for just rocks right now.
Yeah, and then, if we're gonna pile a back run, or a fresh run, gravel, the next spring, we'll be crushing wax, not gravel.
Right, beautiful, that's what we want, yeah, that's beautiful.
Who am I signing with?
The real estate policy.
Oh, real estate policy.
And then, so, is this still new business?
Yep, we have, we're, we're new, new and old business, hoping to adjourn.
I just wanna say, to, in closing, that, um, I appreciate all the, the recognition from the select board and the town manager's office. I wanna recognize my staff, I wanna recognize Casey Rowell, our business manager, for all the hard work that she's put in, Amanda Fecto, um, and Kristin Leahy, they've all stepped up big time for me. Um, I'm lucky to work with this team of women, um, Tracy Martin, you know, Tanya in Alberta, everybody's working hard in our office, and I appreciate coming to work every day and seeing their faces and their positive attitudes. So, we're lucky, thank you.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we definitely...
Yeah, they hardly ever complain about you.
And the road crew, and the road crew, we have a solid road crew.
How's that do that?
New guy, temporary guy, is doing good, I'm hoping to do, uh, um, waiting for this, see if we get any applications, then we'll do a formal interview, and hopefully...
So, he's temporary, but interested for a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the police department, we got a great little community here, let's keep it strong.
Yeah, awesome.
Keep the heart in Harvard.
On that note, on that note, adjourn.